I like. He wants us to hand him after they get ready to present. This guy likes. And so he likes.
For your brothers, seven of us for the day. Be with us now. Best of Susan Bobs. Jesus.
And against that. That's the reasons. So please do this.
Was that Frankie? The House of Democrats. In all schools. We have one. We have a state.
Policy is safe, positive and vibrant community where diversity, innovation and education. Then openly competitive.
Justice is.
Making much improved adjustments in agenda. That's the move. Adjustments to the general. Home service. Eric making motion to the concerned agenda. Sure. It's been moving up center. Seven general. All of everyone. To Eric. Presentations. Health and really come forward and station.
My name is Jeff Strickler and I'm the president of UNC Health, Chad. Um, it is a pleasure to be here, Mayor Matthews and some visitors. This was a follow up to a meeting when several of the town leaders came to the hospital and court and looked at the services that we had there. Um, in that conversation, I think it's clear that it is an opportunity to come and give a real short presentation. To talk a little bit about our role in the community and the services that we offer is and and the services that we intend to grow. We always like to start our presentations, much like you started your meeting by looking at our mission and our vision and our purpose statement. We have experience grounded. Just really kind of emphasize on the mission, we're here for the health and wellbeing of the entire Chadon community. And our vision is to be the provider of choice. Uh, and we provide that access point to all the services for UNC Health. And so our purpose is really to keep as much care local and close to home as we can. And that's been our guiding principle for the six plus years that I've been part of UNC Chadon. As the, as you all know better than I'm sure even I, we have this long history of almost. Started in nineteen thirty seven in a house that was on the property where the old hospital was. That's where physicians established practice, a couple rooms in their house where they could provide care for individuals that couldn't go back home. Um, in nineteen fifty with funds from federal government, uh, other resources in the community, we were able to build. Uh, a large hospital, uh, just off Third Street and that served this community for fifty eight years. Um, and then in two thousand and eight, it became necessary to move out of that structure, move into a new and up to date hospital. Um, and at that same point in two thousand and eight, we combined with UNC Health. We were actually the third hospital in what was the developing UNC health system at that point in time. When we built the hospital, we took advantage of some new federal funds, um, and programs which were intended to keep. Care, um, at the local level for communities that were really. And having maybe some challenges with, uh, keeping healthcare services at the local level. So we became a critical access hospital. And what a critical access hospital is, is it has to be identified as a rural community. Uh, we're capped at the maximum twenty five beds. We have to have a twenty four seven emergency department. And with meeting those requirements, we get some preparational, uh, fundings from the federal and state programs, Medicare and Medicaid. Which is intended to meet costs and be able to keep as much care in the local community as possible. Next slide. But it's important to note that we've only been able to stay, uh, in this community and provide the care that we provide because of the support that provided by the UNC. UNC Health System, as you can see, you can slide there and notes, you know, busy, but just to call out a couple of facts. Uh, we're one of twenty hospitals across the state. We cover the state from coast to the mountains. Um, in addition to those hospitals, we have, uh, clinics in almost all counties in Carolina. Um, and we're also have close ties with the university with training programs, particularly with the school of medicine. And then so to bring that down at the local level, it's through the support of UNC Health. That we're able to keep our doors open, continue to serve our, uh, mission. Keep as much care local as we can, provide that front door to the UNC Health. System when other services are needed. We are also a key part of their educational mission because most of our physicians have a UNC Health affiliation back with the School of Medicine. And most of our care providers about physicians is the Department of Family Medicine. And so in addition to having those faculty members, we also have residents, residents, family medicine residents in our program. And in fact, a few years ago, we started a rural residency track for family medicine residents that are dedicated to the Chadon County, uh, community. With the intent being that, and we know from experience from other organizations. That physicians tend to stay in the community that they're trained. Um, and so that ultimately is why we started that rural residency track. Next slide. And we were, we feel very, um, um, committed to the fact that we are going to work with other organizations. For our overall mission, the care for the health and the wellbeing of everyone that resides in Chadon County. Uh, we work with a number of different community groups and organizations throughout Chadon County, just to call out a couple. Uh, we work very closely with Piedmont Health, which is the federal qualified health center that, uh, serves Chadon County. Um, and our physicians and staff, uh, work in both, uh, locations. Uh, when you look at Central Carolina Community College, that's another organization that we have a lot of relationships with. And we train on some of their nurses to do rotations in our hospital that receive their. Next slide. Services that we currently have at the hospital. Uh, we have a twenty four seven emergency department. There's currently eleven treatment bays in that emergency department. We are currently undergoing a construction project that will move us up to fifteen treatment bays. On that construction was necessary to meet the demand as the emergency department volume continues to grow. Um, we then on the inpatient side, as I mentioned, we are capped to twenty five beds. So we operate twenty five beds, uh, on the inpatient side. We typically have an average daily census of twelve to fifteen patients on any, uh, given day. Um, about a third of those patients were there for actual rehab services. So someone that has had hospitalization either in our hospital or perhaps somewhere else. And they've come and come to us for an extended stay to get stronger, um, to work with our rehab services, physical therapy, occupational therapy and speech. To get them to a place where they can go. Um, with having family medicine there, we're able to treat, uh, treat all ages there. So as long as it's not a complicated pediatric admission, we're able to keep children there at that location, uh, as well. And probably, uh, and, uh, the other thing that we have is a very strong surgeon. So we have, uh, operating as four rooms. Those are operating rooms, two of those are procedure rooms, and we have a number of different surgeons. Services that we provide. We provide general surgery, we provide urology, we provide GYN services, uh, we provide orthopedic services. Uh, we work with some of the dental providers in the community when they need anesthesia services to be in the hospital. Um, and that's just a listing of, uh, some of the services. And then we have all the support services that go along with that. So, um, all the imaging, when we look at x rays such as a plane x rays, CAT scans, MRIs, ultrasounds, all of those can be done. We have a full laboratory service that can, uh, do various types of blood testing, both for the inpatient as well as outpatient services as well. Uh, we're very excited to really announce publicly here tonight that we're starting a new service this week. Uh, we're using a third party that offers geriatric mental health services on the outpatient, uh, side. Um, and that's through Senior Life, uh, Solutions. Next slide. And then the most exciting, uh, news is that, uh, five years ago, we restarted maternity services at our campus after a twenty eight year lapse. Um, we started those services, um, Labor Day of twenty twenty. Um, and, um, it was not by design, we opened it in Labor Day, but it was, uh, appropriately named. Um, when you look at it, if you remember what was happening in twenty twenty, that was. And you certainly would, it's not ideal, uh, to start new services, uh, during the pandemic. So we had a number of challenges with keeping, uh, staff, um, there in a lower volume maternity service. Um, but I'm happy to report we're on the other side of that now. Uh, we fully staff both on physician side as well as on the nursing side. And, uh, from those early days, our delivery volume has essentially doubled. Um, and so we're in a much stronger place. Um, our, uh, labor and delivery services, there's a total of five rooms in that area. Three of those rooms are what are known as LDRP rooms. That means the mother does everything from arrival, the laboring to delivery, to the recovery and postpartum, and does not leave that room. And, uh, their child can stay with them in that room as well. But we do have two additional postpartum rooms for any move people around for, uh, high volume periods of time. Um, we also use those part postpartum rooms on occasions for women with GYN, um, issues as well as pediatric cases because this unit is completely locked. So it's only through badge access that you can get infants. And then we have a very small nursery there, but we encourage that the, um, the infant stays in the room. Next slide. Um, and we first, as you all know, Chadon County has been growing. It's one of the fastest growing counties in North Carolina. And, uh, UNC Chadon will grow, uh, with the, the community that we serve. Um, I mentioned some of the surgical services that we've added, uh, through the years. Um, last year is when we really added urology. Um, and, uh, we grew our general surgery offerings. Uh, in this coming year, we hope to, uh, grow our repeating offerings, our general surgery offerings, um, as well as the GYN surgery. By the side, so we're continually looking to, to grow. You can see some stats there, um, on the right hand side, since we've opened our maternity program, they've been over five hundred and fifty deliveries. Um, that's been at that location. Um, we average a little bit more than two hundred a year. We've done, uh, last year, we did over eight hundred and fifty surgery. They've been over thirteen hundred individuals that were admitted there in the hospital. Um, I'll add that we do almost seventeen thousand emergency department visits every year. Um, and you can see where we've done over four hundred colonoscopies and endoscopies. So very busy, a very small place, but very busy. Um, but I believe that was my last, uh, slide, but I'll be happy to entertain any questions that.
So on the senior life. Is that focused on dementia also? What's the situation there?
Yeah, so this is a completely outpatient service. Um, it, it offers group therapy, so individuals will actually come into treatment for about a thirty day period of time. And we'll spend three days, um, coming in for group therapy sessions, uh, education and virtual business when this happens. It's less for dementia, it's really more for, um, many elder adults suffer from depression, they suffer from anxiety. Uh, they suffer with a number of challenges just with that training, this no period of life. Period of time, it's based upon their progress, that's what we.
So just a group anything.
Yeah, it's, they will look at what their families. They will, you know, look at what their individual capabilities are. There'll be educational sessions, everything from nutrition to, uh, physical fitness and wellness. Um, and just really put them in a stronger position mentally than they was, um, to, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, we absolutely, I don't have anything tonight, but we. As I mentioned.
So the group therapy to focus on whatever. Question anxiety. And then recommendations for at home support. Is that like recommending the family do A, B and C in a supportive network? Is that kind of how that works?
Family as well as the individuals that they don't have.
Well, I would like to say if you hadn't, the board, if you hadn't had a chance to tour, go down and to the hospital. We were fortunate enough to be there on the day one of the baby's delivery. Uh, and so we were there to celebrate that, we should have named the child Solomon City, but we didn't. And the other thing, I think this is finally important, didn't ask the question. The closure of your hospital. Pretty much give assurance that a hospital would not close because of the deterioration in the healthcare system. So that's a bit of news that you can take out and kind of. That's, that's a good thing this area.
If I may add a little bit just to that. So where the question came from, there was a, a number of media attention, social media attention. Where there were, uh, five hospitals in North Carolina where that said, under some of the, um. Um, both federal and state budgetary limitations that were at risk, closure. Um, that information came from UNC Chefs Center, which we work very closely with. Um, they do a lot of work in the rural environment, not just in North Carolina, but across the country. Um, that, um, they did not work with us on that data, that data merely come from looking at percent Medicare and Medicaid population in Carolina. Um, and therefore, if there's going to be cuts in Medicare, Medicaid, then it can significantly impact the hospital. They also look at your, uh, overall financial statements. Um, and of course, that's a small rural, uh, facility. Um, historically speaking, uh, we would have a loss as a hospital, financial loss, which the UNC Health System would better. Um, and so, uh, that is why we were called out. But what was missing from that analysis is the support that UNC Health provides. And UNC Health is absolutely committed to the Chadon County community. Um, UNC Health gets a significant amount of referrals that come through us to them. And that's not reflected in those financial, uh, statements. So they understand the value of us of being here and being present. Um, and the other thing that I'm happy to report is even though historically the hospital has lost money, last two year, uh, we have been.
Thank you, President.
Thank you.
So much. Four point two. The Chadon County.
Um, today we are here to talk about our spaces. Um, just to get a little bit of background for the project, like to talk about some of the Chadon County. One is that we have about. Eighteen point five percent of those adults showed partially renegation and top priority for moving in. About four percent of Chadon adults reported not acting place that exercise doesn't be. The physical activity in the past month. And also, of course, you can say Chadon has been, uh, that hopefully, um, every day, um. For two more, two or more weeks decreased between years. Um, and that was the highest, um, at that time among females, women and black and Latinx. Also, eleven point nine percent of Chadon County youth between ages of three to four are not in school or in. Um, a part of the community assessment is to also do. From qualitative research and did some community public group. And a couple of quotes that we have in my sponsor group say that, um, we need more activities for young people and even for other, for our older people to. Like, um, I'm who did or although now we's living here. Another person said, we need more activities. There's nowhere to really hang out besides that. Can't really have fun when we're out, who's this? Just going to the restaurant. So research shows that renovation helps to build resilience. Um, there, there is a strong association between access to parks, playgrounds and green spaces. And lower rates of stress, burden and anxiety. So as a result of the two twenty four community assessment, um, one of the top factors that was selected was activities for. And so, uh, within the Chadon Health Alliance, um, we have a subcommittee called Activities. And one of our strategies is to increase the evidence spaces for you, value through advocacy and participation. Some key things that we would like you to think about, um, in this presentation are that one, public spaces holding unique value for teenagers. And they offer a stage for recreation, cultural expression and social commitment. And across different studies, these spaces have been shown to play a significant role in development. Also, youth front spaces, um, can help young people feel like they have investment in their community. And that they can develop a strong sense of ownership over that. Research shows that about eighty percent of teenagers prefer being more older rather than younger. Of, um, about thirty, uh, over thirty percent regularly use street and parks or social media. So these spaces provide the.
Alright, so this slide, you want to make a connection about how, um, this project, you're saying, you know, creating a space, um, designed by youth. We be aligned with this being an experiment. So the South City twenty three point four is the plan to the east goal. This project does relate. The foster community. And then east goal, that plan of providing these parks and recreation facilities versus the neighborhoods and growing tax evasion. And then so you may remember that for that twenty three four, that is the, um, complete plan. So we left a survey that gathered information on South City residents. And that survey, um, showed. Number one, number two. Um, so this, um, initiative we're interested in to identify was the goals that. And then I just wanted to wrap it into twenty three four Tyler to me, Paris and me. Then the following. Expansion. So the improvements, program enhancement. Um, strategic expansion of the greenway system and then including to so the development and programming. So this is going to help further. Alright, and then I just wanted to highlight some exciting examples that happened elsewhere where we cut out of the meaningful part and designing. Our faces for them. Um, so that is the example of. You were involved with the, the planning, the design, with this, the hallway, so it includes, um. Adilities that you would, you know, are different from what we see at a point. A lot of public spaces are really designed for either really young children or adults. And it often misses that group in the middle of adolescence, which means the, um, young adults. Um, so when they have a voice in designing spaces, they're going to do things. See here, a four part shipping container that was turned into a rock climbing wall. King Kong cables, the station of the patients, like performances, um. Studying on CD. And then this other part I'm looking about. Sweden. Um, and he wrote, um. Some social seating, so they designed like what we would not propose, what was. So, um, I think just helpful to see where some of these, um, hundreds happen and stuff on. Like he said, you know, these stations. Um, full special values to neighbors and we've been focusing more, uh. Invested in child, there can be even things like doing things. Creating these spaces and. You know, we design a space, like there, anyone thinking of you are. I love it, asking you, Mark, seeing that that you think of the survey. Um, so we did that, we surveyed to get the idea of what features and many of these experiences that you really want to see in a specific space is important. We know we searched the features that we're hearing about, we can tell from the survey. Um, we also hosted a meeting, um, in South City to be a feedback from the survey. Um, across the county. Um, there's a few surveys that find it, also a motion of violence, your survival is just in power, that's it, fine, attracts me. And so there's a happy aspect here. And also an incentive for those who completed the survey was that. And so now I'll drop the, from the results. We see over, um. You see, for those responding, it's where people will start base, um, out of the box, it's a case of portability. And they live here in South City, Portland, or this area. Um, and you can see the big amount of response is based on me, so both. Those are good mix. Um, next slide. Uh, and so here's a little bit more from the brackets for the survey, so the majority of our responding, I'd say at. This family. Um, just want to get their files, white and see, not as black. Um, and then for dinner, the majority of our response is. Alright, so now here are the top features that rose to the top, so for indoor features, the top five include it comfortable seating. Gaming tables like, uh, table, table. Um, a stage for performance with, um, my seat. An indoor space as well as a park facility. And then next to me show of our outdoor feature, um, outdoor game games with the first. Right one, um, things like air happy ping pong tables, cement floor, a park four part, it's probably an obstacle part. Uh, a stage for performances, getting outdoors as well, a movie screen and a skate park. Um, in all the surveys, we must base for you to clear general comments. Um, also we can be examples of things that may be listed in the survey. And so there are some comments from you. One person said, oh, I can see a place where kids can play together and even sales, making friends and have time to relax. One person said, oh, I can see a place where we can stay together and even sales, making friends and have time to relax. Another said, maybe we uh, local help stays where the other adults can meet and get to know each other because they might interact with each other at all. And another said, um, they want to see quiet spaces for people to sit and work. And areas for people to soak the lives in, so a safe space in one, you're not going to be disturbed or feel humble. That was important to them. And at the bottom there, there's some other ideas they threw out there, so there's families, treehouses, dog parks. And a positive affirmation. Okay. So that would be collected from you, um, we can have a posting with the adults and and some. Um, the next step will be to proceed with this study, um, and we have like clothes available through the department to cover the costs. Um, it's something that's important to us, I'm working with, is that we garden gate should not be lost, so making sure that that kind of factor is completely. In the process to perform a design of this space. And so that definitely is our recommendation at this time.
I love the way you go. So, um. When you add a hundred and twenty. And that's from the whole county.
So the data sharing was of this, so we, this is the South City area or number five.
We had some meetings with DOT and we had some differences about how we were going to develop 64 in the future, because DOT is committed to convert 64 from Woodspeed, which is the purple area on the dome, all the way over to the far right in the colors that you see there, which is where Ellington Road and the stock are coming together. And they hadn't really looked at how the land is going to develop. What they wanted to do was to put an end down to 64. And so we started working with them to come up with ideas and they agreed to let us go forward with the plan before they got involved, which is an unusual step. But we agreed to move ahead to find to figure out where they're going to put leftovers, because they're going to put the leftovers in, where we can get a full access. And we know that if you look at the green areas, we've got this mid-state residential you can see on the far right. There's over a thousand residential units posed for that area. I'm going to use a little corner so that Katie can see it here.
How long does your desktop computer last? lasted I mean three, five years? So back to your question on basically the the recurring cost after the demonstration is capital replacement cost for for the kit itself. We're willing to donate the kit. After about five years and and it's call it a thousand one significant one significant figure, call it a thousand dollars, call it five hundred amortized over five years.
After you guys finish the pilot, is there gonna be someone on the town staff who will have to be trying to respond to signal sent?
Probably, probably. Did I understand there was a an RFP out recently to provide IT services to the town? I I I thought I saw something on the website regarding there is.
Yeah. Okay, but it's more for like the computers at the end as well.
But
And the place parts.
But as as I read the services that were required and that were expected of the eventual contractor, the RFP, it was to provide help desk, it was to provide response to it was to provide response to emergency connections and feathers. Most of this, as far as any hands-on connections you might have to do, it's the class that climb out of the car and get back in punchline to the joke on a software engineer with a car stalled on the side of the road. You have to power cycle the equipment to get it come back up. Unless something burns up, unless it fails, unless it fails a smoke test and something moving.
So if the other antenna fails, how much is that?
The antenna, hundred and forty dollars. Now, as far as extended color coverage, this is coverage, the measurements we took were basically from the visitor's center for one full block down either side. If you want further coverage, you have options. You either need another one of these, all of it, with another internet service provider at whatever the cost of the business service is for that point, or you need just this, because this has a built-in relay function. It's two frequencies, five gigahertz, two and a half gigahertz. You can provide your Wi-Fi access to your clients on one frequency. The devices use the other frequency to provide relay traffic for that and they can leapfrog. It's called a wireless, called a Wi-Fi mesh network and you can buy them for your home. You can buy them for your
So let me ask you a question. Since we're going into the mainstream program. As long as it
Uh, lastly, question on the main I did uh, it out uh, yeah. He is uh, and we've been sponsored some of them have
There's that.
When to a particular location. Do they own a Sony?
Well, there's enough for um, other kids. I think our ask is that you provide us with designers because we had
What any index that doesn't matter what it's It's all basically the same issues. Uh, I think the main thing is we're trying to provide service to people that might not have access. And so that's that's the bottom line is trying to help out someone that may not have actually access to one of this data and this economy. Where things go and the advice maybe you don't perceive it.
If I may, uh, the concern to raise, we're all valid. Uh, there are technological solutions to them. Uh, many of those, this is, this is the reason why cybersecurity, cybersecurity is one of the hot professions out there. Is that, as you said, anybody who was providing this kind of service, even if it's in your own home. And somebody going in and penetrating your home network by hacking your video camera on your garage because you failed to put in secure passwords or failed to change from the default password that was there. And and so part of what part of what we're offering is is not just the kit, but the the expertise to provide um, reasonably good security and a monitoring system that would allow us during the pilot program and someone from the town, hopefully through the internet, through the IT services that you're getting getting to provide that kind of remote monitoring. Now, as I said, the services you're talking about are primarily for this building. But you could do all of the monitoring, you could do ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the monitoring for this from this building through the email and a remote uh, secure shell connection to the computer that would allow you to check what's happening.
And by my add, you would be under no obligation to continue the service after the three month follow-up period.
I get my equipment back.
Yes.
Or you can keep it, but yeah, well that's why I'm getting away.
Uh, Jake, do you have any concern that police?
I don't think so. I think your server is pretty secure.
The load is separate from town stuff.
They they are connected with the router, but it's not like that with our possibility and worst case scenario, we try to keep the the uh, well, not on the same server.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that
Yeah.
This is so much confidence.
About a point you recently I hadn't considered. My assumption was that the visitor's skirt was not commercially providing ISP.
It is.
But if it's tied through in through a router network that the town owns into the police, that's a separate thing.
It's not. It has its own separate account, own separate account number, everything. It's not tied here at all.
Um, I'm I'm thinking sister.
No, it's not tied to this network at all.
We need to upgrade the visiting account to commercial.
It's a commercial, yeah.
The biggest stock of So if, geez, if you feel good about I'm okay with because it seems like questions are being answered back and forth on both sides. And they challenge that portion. And there's no obligation, um, if they're told, so I say let's proceed, let's see what they have to say and I'm taking some of them. That being the motion just concerned.
Yes, please.
So I made the motion that we proceed uh, with the proposed project and contract uh, he bought back to the board.
Then the motion about saying that we proceed and that any contract, you know,
So this is a popular current move during
And so that that says the same time of the time of placement. I mean, the system back uh, new package six that we got with that very it said that do that and uh, please be kind, folks, we're very challenging sports and and so we know and so uh, it's supposed to be and so as you all mentioned, uh, and so the 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 porters that I put together, I'm saying that if there's we like the doctor, that means time in place during any and and so that is in the habit that goes to Tuesday and then dropping the first Monday, completely with D I four and later. This would uh end up having an idea. This is not a top layer. And next, so not any gates to the first level. First Monday is all obviously where we had those finals. They only said, you know, we've been able to film from the first Monday, uh, January, the second, but not happening. And what I think I'll and I feel like often you do the box to work up. Maybe you're looking very, very uh steady visual ID or anything that we sent them that all went through. So here's the logo scatter. Without um and Uh, without, um, and it was going to follow. All right, not the beginning. Um, it's often, uh, it's just a, so, but this was, so. I believe, and say this, let me, we have eight, couple days, none of the, we still can leave. This is, we are, we're ready to leave. So that's, uh, regulation or that, and then I'm looking inside, glad I asked you a question though. Uh, one, you need four meeting. If we have a few, okay, we gotta really, no, there was more light. There's nothing with that, but, okay, this is. Then it goes, it's.
Finally, no, we can do. No, no more than, I would say. First one is you see a lot of people.
Yeah.
Then, as we go down, you have in or this.
That is actually.
And, yeah, same picture. But I want to do two, at least, that, that's the, part, part of the year.
We would double it up, like, maybe District one, two, three, and then District four, five, and that large.
Yeah. I would say just.
Just all three.
You have been, uh, you. Thank you. Everybody.
All just basically back, uh, in the, say, you can, uh, six thirty times, you do, and that's what, sort of, that's the solid, yeah. Thank you.
It's great.
The, the, that, that thirty-six regular means of the town's office, uh, this. Sorry.
They don't have a second day here, and the, uh, that's what we. Well, there's a lot on that, um, on seven, seven, three, area.
Stumble, too, but, yeah.
So we have Mr. Oliver here with us. We have finally been able to nail down some, uh, final, final figures. If you remember, um, several weeks back, um, we came to you all um, with the first, um, ask, so we could go, um, to try to work out, you gave, um, gave us a consensus to move forward to work on the figures and um, working on a contract. And so what we've asked Reggie to do is to give us a detail of the cost behind the ask for the money, um, because if we remember, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand um, construct upfront construction cost with fifteen thousand dollars a year over a five-year. So what you've got laid out here in front of you tonight is some of the figures. And so I'm gonna let Reggie take over and kind of explain that a little more.
We said, can we, it's a big process that we walk as, um, this, this bit more down this part of the fight.
So now that we have, um, some figures of where, um, the hundred, the portion of the town, the hundred and twenty-five thousand, as you'll see, um, the fencing and the dugouts is, uh, the biggest chunk of the, and the hundred and twenty-five, along with the dirt and field ingrading, so that pretty much, that's the hundred and twenty-five, um, the town would, um, would give for the first year, and then the fifteen thousand dollar a year for the first five years, as you can see, Reggie has provided some yearly cost estimates.
So the appropriations for the first fifteen, most of the ones from the top of one fourth?
Yes, sir.
And these all look to be uh, improvements that are gonna run with the land.
Does that include the operating costs, uh, even, even such as purpose and? Everything, but we must, pretty much definitely.
So this will increase the actual value of the property. Um, so you need a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Yes, and that way, if we improve, um, the amount of them that ask, um, then we can officially plug these into the contract.
You know, correct.
And we can move forward and send that out. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And also, um, if you'll see on there, uh, the, um, proposing a twenty-six, the twenty-six, is it twenty-six home games, yeah, twenty-six home games, um, the D I third.
Joseph. Y'all are.
But I'll, I'll make a. Uh, prove the order, the minute is twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, fifteen year budget, amend the budget, or just twenty, twenty-six point oh oh racks of park fields, uh, so that we can contract.
Second, that would be a bunch to, uh, go into contract with the, uh, baseball team, I'm just gonna run that. All in favor of that, if you're not signed by, uh, I'm, I'm saying the same. Obviously, Karen, thank you, sir, look forward to. Management's resort.
Maybe two, I didn't develop a. It's in the package, uh, the, the, uh, for calendar. We're all thirty-five, it's been more than, and.
No, it's, uh, we are doing the kickball, the kickball game tomorrow, if anybody wants to play kickball. And, and, uh, you could cover it busily, see the porta potty houses. That's all. Bits, come to eat lunch with us tomorrow. We're gonna have to get ready.
I think, um, I think.
Okay, the, uh, I just wanna thank the chief and the major for coming to the presentation and getting that we had, I heard on, uh, Saturday. They did a good job, and we, we had, he had some of the officers to come along. He has some of the officers to be, this one, but we wanna thank you, thank you all for that for us.
I'd like to give a, a thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, Josh Harris, giving a, a good contact, I'll reach out there for something. What to be for a town, you're replacing groups, baseball dugout at Bray Park. I met a gentleman named Manny Camalis, of Venice, seventy-nine, you know, he is a true one, you know, the spirit. He was himself, and very successful. And helped me with the labor, the town force taking materials, but we got three successes, four box, and two dugout, and people feel the break part. So it was done for free, God did it out of compassion and charity, just wanna give a shout out to those people, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one of the holidays, uh, Saturday. Will be distributing, uh, their food boxes and, uh, in our assistant, the, the, Saturday, eleven thirty at Bray Park, can be digiting now, there are two boxes, and we're also partnering, um, the winter weather, survive, survival, uh, program, winter weather survival, John, uh, who will be providing coats and warm gear, uh, the teller, eleven thirty, eleven thirty. Eleven thirty.
Yes.
Very involved, uh, and for anyone who would need a food boxes for winter gear, coach, last year we had coach, weather, coach, providing, uh, stars, I think, um, so they're coming back this year, uh, we'll be on site, I do, 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 do. So it's free, first time, first serve, everybody's welcome, uh, Bray Park, uh, on the, on the pool side, and Bray Park, uh, so.
And thanks, Sam, and, and Mr. Gray, we're going to the, uh, West Chatham, uh, Random County, Chamber of Commerce, being this week, uh, Miss, Mr. Eagle, let's move for you, and, uh, just do it all around turnout, and hopefully something you're gonna come out and that, and, uh, thank Josh Harris for sitting, uh, doing a great job. That's great.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, that's right, that's really scary.